All right, ready call for order, the regular meeting of the Lenins School Committee, November 7th, 2022.
Flagging Legion through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will open it up for public comment. Do we have anybody? That has signed up either person? I'd like to have that list. So if anybody in person will start, is there anybody in person that would like to provide public comment, please come to the front of the room, state your name and address for the record. Second time, for anybody in the audience who would like to come to give a public comment, please come to the table and state your name and address for the record. And last call for anybody who would like to provide public comment in the audience, just come to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, open it up to anybody online who has either signed up or who would like to step forward, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Second time, anybody who is online who would like to provide public comment, please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. And last and final time, there is anybody online who would like to provide public comment, please state your name and address for the record. And at this time, we'll close the public comment. Communications? Thank you. This. So reading off the school committee statement, the committee represents the needs of all public school students and place their interests above all others who exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols and base our decision on a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high quality public education in Lenins. Yay, communications? You want to say communications call? Okay, thank you for the occasion.
There are no communications.
Move on to steward report, steward report.
Thank you everyone, it is finally November and the Lenins Center for Technical Education Innovation has been kicking off the most. Thirty-nine CTI students are currently out on board. Two schools are bringing the top students. Lummy has since tripled in top students going on job sites, getting lathered top students. We want to take this opportunity to recognize our amazing Lummy instructors, instructors, John Trivari, a new designer, a new hired instructor, senior, the veteran instructor, for prioritizing the future of our coming students. Adding on to the success of CTI starting January 2023, the juniors of CTI will be eligible for call. Our juniors and seniors in carpentry are progressing to building the frame of the new addition to the first how CTI built fifteen years ago. Apparently, the students are working on creating the setup for placing instructors for the new addition and completing the version. Furthermore, our electrical shop has been helping to install a new heating oven donated by Wellbuilt, including over $3,500 worth of parts. Thank you to Wellbuilt for the generous donation. Recently, our Lummy students were taken to Cobb and Reservoir in a museum by Vulture and Town to learn about the Boston Wards. This interesting field trip helped the students obtain knowledge of the Wards. Continuing on, our assistant principal Christopher Kind recently completed and graduated from MABA Leadership Academy One, which has taken home a year's complete. Christopher Kind has received a new vocational director's license specifically for our school. Let's take this opportunity to congratulate him and recognize him for his hard work today. Along with the hands-on opportunities, our auto collision shop has transformed our van into better-looking vehicles, which will help sustain sufficient transportation for the life skills and transport. Thank you, Auto Collision. Dating news, our Perkins Grant has been approved and the instructors of CTI has been purchasing new and updated equipment for their shops. Our shop instructor, Mr. Maginari, and Todd Brown here are teaching us CNC machine and blueprint reading knife tools through the more central mass work force board, which trains adults on how to perform CNC and machinery as well as be able to obtain jobs with skill. Last but not least, our future healthcare workers from health assisting have been working part. Our sophomore in health assisting students have been going to clinicals at elementary schools, teaching the young students how to maintain ranging, and the juniors of health assisting are preparing for their CNA camp for a new program.
Good evening, everyone. New change in news for LHS, we get some club news, athletics in general. So to start off, gift is collecting gently used clothing through November 10. Classes are competing to collect canned goods for Thanksgiving as well, so a lot of good. Back to our community. The blood drive sponsored by NHS has been postponed. The Red Cross staff came down with COVID, so it's rescheduled to December 16. Music program to associate a computer formed by chorus, jazz band, and marching band. Best buddies had a buddy reveal event where we all crapped pumpkins. Eight suites of hungout with our life skills students, it was really fun. Pop trial and debate club received its topic for the year. If any of you aren't aware, there's a new club headed by Mr. Lafayette, Pop Mock Trial Debate, so very. Boys soccer and field hockey both won their district games and are continuing to the tournament. Girls soccer lost their game but had an amazing season. Football continues with more strong performances by the team as usual. LHS hosted a cheer tournament over the weekend. Our team performed great with the music team, taking the championship. And unified basketball has had a great season with impressive victories against rich organizations. Finally, LHS did a mock election for this role of state representative prior to the midterm elections tomorrow. LHS also hosted the annual breakfast of the bands and take practice for the Sunday before Thanksgiving and come support the teams and the band.
Just the. Maybe the CTI could craft them a few lean things, plates. They have the ability with the CNC machine to cut out steel and they can, I'll show you one, they made some. It's kind of cool, really cool to have, and actually there's three conventional slides where they cut out the letters. Since we're having a hard time getting the standard conventional ones. Okay Ben, remember, I know you said finally November, but you've been here since September. We need to get your name tag, right?
And we don't have.
You don't have to be a Ben, I'm a Ben that's like. All right, any questions? That's good. That's a whole lot going on. Nice job. Thank you. Any questions for anyone? And remember, I mean, if and when, it's not a question of if, it's when, football team wins the next game, it'll be eight hundred, which is incredible. I mean, that's, right, Ryan?
Yeah, a weird game Friday night.
Try not to be so emotional. Initially, you're not mad at a few words.
Well, I don't know what that was saying. I mean, yes, they have another football game and.
You could say something in French, you could do a lot of things. Backflip. All right, we're moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So we have just two items tonight. First, I'd like to remind Tommy that there's no school tomorrow.
I don't think you have to remind me of that, but.
Thank you to election day, but it's also a professional involvement day for our staff. All of our staff will be working on focuses ELL across the district, and so. CI strategies will be. And then we have no school also on Friday, that's in observance. Veterans Day. Thank all.
We have Veterans Day at City Hall at 11 o'clock on Friday morning. Any questions, somebody? All right, let's get right to our visiting dog, and then we can get back to the sort of kid, because visiting means visit. I assume they don't want to stay for the whole meeting.
You don't want them to stay.
I see him doing the electric slide over there, so let's turn it over to you. It's a pointy corner.
Maybe some familiar dog. I'm Laura Van Doren, Director of Special Education for Personal Services.
Angela Thomas.
And probably more exciting than the two of us.
Archie, Yellum, and Calvin.
So we have lucked out in that Angela, who is also president of our CTA, has gotten both of her dogs certified as therapy dogs. So we would like to set up a rotation with our principals to have them come into the schools. One at a time.
One at a time. Yep, the only reason why I brought them in together is just so you could get the full package.
I get it.
It's a little, it'll be a little hectic, but.
So Kyle, I think we did have a presentation up. There, now it's gone.
All right, Kyle proclaims magic, it'll be back.
So yes, we brought the picture on here to light for you tonight. So we, oh. We've done some work with Angela in that the way she's gone about getting her dogs certified is really the model that we'd like to see and expand in talking to other districts. There's typically more than one handler that would come in with this type of program. Great place for us to start.
Oh, that's. Great, so many of you know me as Greg's Better Hamel. But I'm also a mother too. We have two girls, Gabby and Hallie. I also have been running my own dog walking and play business for the past twelve years in town, so I have quite a bit of dog and handling experience. Additionally, I went to school for my undergrad in clinical psychology and then I went back and got my MBA. So I've kind of taken a little bit of everything that I've learned in, you know, post-high school and kind of wanted it into business and dog. So. Boone Field Labs is a very well-renowned, you can ask the reader, they actually specialize in therapy dog work. So when we decided to get a dog after we lost the first lab, I really thought long and hard about whether or not I wanted to rescue or do a breeder, and even if I wanted to do a breeder, it was going to be a very responsible breeder, and these people are the best of the best. To date, I think they're working on number twenty-eight. They've donated twenty-eight dogs to local fire officials. I think it's pretty much around that new lead line. So you've probably seen a lot of the dogs in different community events, got a couple working with the state police. So it's really a very well-run, they're very passionate about what they do, and their lines are incredible, the dog's temperament is just, you know, big enders.
So to our student representatives, if you see Kate, it comes her dog.
Yeah, it's Luna.
He's a Boone Field.
He's a Boone Field. Yeah, Luna, she worked for the state police, Black Lab, both like with the banner, off-duty days, Boone Field. So. Team Boone Field, Team Boone Field.
Archie, yeah, Calvin, yes. So one thing we would like to see Boone Field do is come up with a calendar and go to the schools and have it be very scheduled and procedural so that the principals know what's happening and can address what the goal of the dogs visiting would be. So it's going to be during school hours, the students will know that the dogs are coming. There's so much research around the benefits this has for student and staff mental health that we want to make sure we're doing it the right way and. Bonus, because of how Angela's gotten her dog certified, the Alliance for Therapy Dogs that will go over does ensure them as therapy dogs when they are on their visits.
One of the biggest things to note is I think up until this point, there have been therapy dogs that have visited the schools, but it hasn't filled in anything consistent, and there really hasn't been any like foundation of program, so to speak. So I think that's, I know that's one of my goals, and Laura's as well, is to create some sort of program in a sense where you have all these things that can come in, visit, but the students are able to create some sort of bond rather than it be, oh, I met a dog five months ago, and then that was it. So you want these kids to be able to see them on a regular basis. I realize that there's 6,000 kids in the district, there's two dogs, there's one of me. You know, it gets a little tricky, but my goal was to be able to, you know, really put a good rotation around. People have already been emailing me trying to get.
I'll take my petition.
Yes.
I have a petition right now about.
I'm like, pick your favorite dog and.
So as far as the lines of therapy dogs go.
Yeah, essentially, there's a number of volunteer organizations that can do the certification. Alliance Therapy Dogs is one of the better-known ones, and it is. It's a group of volunteers, and essentially what you do is, you know, ensures that a dog is going to be a very well-rounded dog for therapy dog business. That being said, what they do is they have a lot of criteria that the dogs have to meet in order to be able to be certified. So you fill out a whole bunch of paperwork, they have to date all the shots, health, well-being, me as a handler, I have to give Boree chats, and then I have to go and do observation exhibits with the certified handler to ensure that when they're out in the community, they're actually going to be representative of what a therapy dog should be. You don't want a dog that's going to be fighting, barking.
There's so many visits, benefits rather of dogs visiting. We've seen through research and in talking to other districts that students who may be having trouble academically or with sentimental health issues socially, that sort of thing, there's something about visiting with an animal that can bring that out and gives them another opportunity that we don't see in the typical school day. And we have dogs who are ready to come to our schools and go and. Fast, you'll think about those assessments, then when we want to see our students able to shine, this would be my thing. Be getting the dog.
Oh, yes, I mean, just saying, but me just walking in, how many of you guys, you know, got a kick out of Archie getting hanged with water. Then I was just like, thirty, yeah, you missed, you missed that. That was, that was like that. Sorry. I mean, something like, like that, I mean, it's just, you know, just to bring a little bit of joy. It doesn't have to be much, but it just alleviates a little bit of stress, you know, because all it's Monday. Now, well, I just said you laughed today.
The one thing that also our responsible handler will do is make sure that the school or wherever they're visiting is set up so that wherever you're seen, the humans are in a good spot, but also the dogs are in a good spot. So another reason, two is a lot to manage for a person in an unfamiliar setting, but, you know, this is information we're going to share with principals about how things should look and how it should be set up and how we can make sure that students, staff, dogs, everyone is getting all these benefits that we're.
The goal of the visits is not to be an imposition, it's really to insert the dogs into the day-to-day activities of kids. But that being said, you know, I want to be able to know if I'm signing up for a school, I'm not walking in and nobody knows what's going on. So having a checklist at each school so everybody knows, these are the things that are required in order for me to actually have an effective visit. Because I work, you know, I have to run my business, I don't, unfortunately, don't have all day to be able to, you know, do my visits in a perfect world, I would, but I want to make sure that these visits are productive and they're, you know, organized and some some batch.
So along with that, right, we also want our students to know this is a great way to interact. This is probably not going to be the best way to interact, and, you know, we know with the population that we have in the district right now, we have students who may not have the opportunity to have pets at home, or, you know, families that, whatever reason, this isn't something they experience within their home life, so we want to give them that experience and those benefits, but also the right way. So it's just another opportunity, learning opportunity for our students. In talking to neighboring districts, they've been able to see many great things coming out of visiting animals that is just a little sketchy.
And in my business, you know, this is kind of where I have the experience, maybe over some of the other handlers out there, they don't matter, but I am. I understand how to, you know, dog language and I can tell a stressed or relaxed dog, he's got facts right now, but I'm able to, you know, walk into a classroom, you know, even help kids or even staff that may be fearful or maybe have had a negative experience. This is how you properly eat and breed a dog, and this is how a good dog should be. So really just creating a good positive experience, but also setting boundaries so kids know, like if it's a child that doesn't, you don't pull a dog's stick, you don't hang the reins. This is how you should treat it.
List of sample learning activities that, you know, the dogs have come, visit, take part in, a lot of opportunities. I already have gaps. Things read to the dog, the dog were to come in, and I have a reluctant breeder, could they read to the dog? Yeah, that's right there on the list, and there's just a lot of places that you can go with it and create a learning opportunity. That's also going to match with a lot of the high-quality curriculum that we're working on as a district, which is a student's access.
Questions?
So I have to just, out of curiosity, are we making sure that there's no students who are allergic in the classrooms to the dog before the dog gets. Yeah, some.
So that's kind of the number one question that we're thought about in having dogs in schools, and so that's where we partner with principals and really make sure that if a teacher is saying, I want a dog to visit, knowing, are I the school nurse? Are there any allergies? How do they need to be addressed? And, you know, maybe students who maybe can't touch the animal, but is okay being within the space, because we know allergies have different presentations. There's research around the benefits of even just seeing the animal and not having to physically interact.
You know, it's a wonderful program, certainly have had things in the past, and it's great that it's something that sounds a little more available. There was the conference this past week, a fair cap that was there that everybody really enjoyed, that they had given the presentation and. Partnered with a. Is this something that is a cost to the district or is it something that's doing?
Yeah, that is my heart. So thank you very much. I knew that, you know, the therapy handles that I'm aware of also do that experience now. Actually, just as an aside, if there's ever a team that approaches the district and is actually asking for a fee, that is not a legitimate therapy dog organization that you can associate with, because you're not able to accept their fee. Amens. I, I just wanted to. Definitely do that. I mean, two, three to have treats for the dog, yes, so they always appreciate that. So they're not good at all.
Of course, sincerely do. Anyone else? Mr. Ron?
I, Michael. How are, do you have your dogs tested?
Oh, for, we have to do an annual physical, and that's just, that's pretty standard, and then same with the, if we have to do like a fecal sample, a bit test for lung and paravilla and everything, so that's at the annual. And every year, I'm required to do all, to get re-certified, so to speak. So at the end of, you know, I think I got everything done maybe July and August, so I would just go do all of that again. And then I have all the paperwork, in fact, I'm pretty sure I sent it to you, so I would make sure that the district has all up-to-date vaccinations.
I, you know, I. Love dogs and love cats, I had a dog, I had, biggest concern I always had with the. Spilled cat or dog. How do you deal with that? Because natural will always be spilled on the dog.
Oh, yeah, yep. I mean, in all honesty, you know, and I've talked, I've actually, we've talked to different districts about this that actually have therapy dogs in other districts. There's always going to be drool, there's always going to be dog fur, any, but there's probably about eighty percent of kids and staff that are coming in in schools have some form of.
That's from home, right?
But I will say that I. Yeah, we paid a little extra to make sure the dogs did not bruise as much, so they're not like a, you know, the dogs that like that.
All right, we can move on from this section.
You can't run away from it. I mean. Something like a.
I know.
That's it, but if I had a dog or a cat.
Yeah.
So we talked about making sure that, you know, the custodial staff knows when it's a dog visit day, making sure that they have, like, the wipes and stuff. Yeah.
Well, actually, the kids will not be able to give the dog, give the dog treats, it's me, so we can, we'll be able to eliminate a fair amount of.
Because.
And I'm pretty curious.
Unfortunately, I hate myself, but as a nurse, you know, the transition from this to that is.
Yep, and that's why we want, we wanted to work with a certified therapy dog T, where you have to take these things into account and have a procedure and plan with our principals, just to make sure it's a positive experience as it can be for everyone.
Are there no drool or anything else?
Come on, losing the lines.
Is it called drool or? There's a hundred people watching this a little while ago, and they started talking about drool only.
Suggestions as to like maybe outside of what we presented that might make it? You know, other, other things that we could maybe.
I would say. I think that, you know, as you're developing, the kids and the staff are developing relationships with the animal, but as crises come up, different kinds, that there is a way to act like, if you're available, I know we have another business.
I've got my, I've got my dog Kevin book out on, but I do have, you should be on the emergency list.
I, when, when we had that car accident on one night, I did reach out to.
Thank you.
What, I don't know what that district was.
Oh, Air Shirley.
Air Shirley, I reached out to the superintendent there, just offered, offered the dogs or whatever they needed. But, you know, I certainly, these guys are great. I mean, dogs are great, and.
But you don't really, oh, like, how many dogs I want today?
How many are you rejecting?
Oh, I mean, I, well, I defer to Laura and Jenny on that, but I mean, in my mind, I mean, essentially, I'd love to see, you know, at least ten different therapy dogs from meetings to be able to be dispersed across the districts.
So maybe breeds different, you know, maybe.
Different size, it just be last.
So maybe.
You can't choose horses. They have connections.
You had horses, but we're rid of them.
I especially like dogs.
But if, if there are other people that might be watching.
Yes.
You'd be able to build up a kind of a regional, you know, group of those interested in doing this. Some people may have more or less time, but then you could build up those visits, and you got Chad that's got the state police dog, but he's everywhere, so it's not. But then you could build up those visits and you got Chad that's got the state police dog, but he's everywhere. So it's not, even though he's from town, he lives here, he's got kids here. It's hard for him. He's, they're calling him all over the place all the time. But maybe you build up a network of others that are interested in doing the same thing that you did. And you get to your point where you got twenty dogs and you can now spread them out for a straight.
Yeah. And then it's great because then you can essentially, uh, figure out which dogs are best suited for which. Always like Calvin would be great with the little. Or she's great with little kids, but he's, you know, his speed is more like. But again, like they, they are very versatile, but like you said, you.
My darling's making a political statement. He turns his back on us.
You able to certify all the trainers or handlers yet?
Not yet. I doubt that definitely is something, you know, in my spare time. It'd be good to do, uh, because they're, they are, they are in need of certified, um, handler.
Yeah.
I know Brad, a bit, uh, Luna Bird. He's, he's been doing it. So he gets pretty busy. Yeah.
Dude, I'm allergic to dogs and I, because I love petting dogs and I really like, I petted that dog.
Yeah.
I guess he likes me. Um, I guess he did. I I don't know if like this looks just a bummer, but like. Is it possible? Like maybe we got like gloves, so like the kids are allergic or maybe like they can also wear COVID masks too, so they don't breathe it in and like. That's like the best part of it all is like. Able to pet them. I mean, sure, seeing them is great.
Oh, yeah, seeing a little pet them is like that. So, you know, it'd be good to hear what the, um, district has for us. I think so. Maybe, maybe that'll be available. You know, and I also did ask, um, I think for the district or each. Have like a little caddy, so to speak. So when I'm visiting, you know, these guys are body trained, but you know. Um, the food bags, just a little bit of spray, water for them so they can, you know. I would think that as you are growing this. Uh, thing, um, that there are allergenic dogs with care and not harm, maybe be able to expand. To the deep things of those at some point.
Very, yes, let's get it. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They've been very patient.
They've been very patient.
So if anybody knows anyone that's like to participate, the phone numbers were updated and contact, uh, great. All right. Are we going to speak, Mr. Lomori, about the M A S S certification presentation?
Yes, sir. We are excited to announce we have two students that have received an award. Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. I'd like to call them out. So this award is. Based on academic excellence. Criteria. Is. First, I would like to recognize the student Arsenal.
Tell us more. So academic excellence, that's a big deal. Tell us some more. Chicken dogs. I never got one of those. I'm sure everyone's shocked by it.
I have a citation for you?
No, the, you know.
Go ahead. Tell us in your work. I mean, this is, this is a big deal.
Excited to be awarded. Pardon much about it.
Well, if you could, um, share the criteria.
You mean, this is a surprise, like? Yeah. So they nominated, you didn't even have to ask them to be nominated. So. Your teachers and staff decided that you were worthy of this, so they put you in for it, correct?
I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's even more impressive. Go ahead, Lauren.
So the district, uh. And this award is based of the number of awards we could give is based on the. Student population that we have. So the minister, we were allowed to select two students to be in. Putting rating point average. Superintendent makes those, makes the decision she was given. The nice surprise.
That's amazing. Two out of every, that's, that's pretty impressive. So where do you get this academic excellence from? Your mother or your father? Let's start the trouble right now. Let's start it right now. I want to know. No, 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 where?
She said her mom.
Oh, okay. Your dad's probably willing to. He's willing to admit it. It's okay. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
To a lot of a lot of people.
Do you have, uh, plans to graduate?
I'm a college student. Plan to study biomedical aerospace.
Just remember biomedical will keep us all alive. It's a long, so if we can push in another direction. Well, that's good. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a biomedical research company in Western that generally.
Oh, you all do, yeah. Let's go ahead, buy a genie.
Here, so.
Thanks for letting us put you on the spot. But that's a big deal. So, I mean, top ten percent and two out of all the.
You just showed.
That's right. Critical thinking. Critical thinking.
That's the nugget right there.
Congrats on that, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Taking hours, taking all the work.
You think you're escaping? We talked about drool for twenty minutes. You think we're going to get away from this? No way. Whatever you feel like. Who do you want to thank?
Well, I just want to thank. Well, very true. Really now, um, now I also want to thank, um. In my. I want to thank myself because to be honest, to be honest, um, I've worked really hard.
Do you want to biomedical to keep us all alive?
I don't, but I did want to go into nursing. So, you know, I could definitely, you know, keep you guys alive.
I'm all for that.
Don't come back for doctor's visits or something?
No, I'm fine. But everyone wants to, you can't, right? No matter how much money you have in life, all everybody wants is time. Right? Eventually you have everything you 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 think you needed and realized none of it mattered. And the only thing that matters is time. Right?
Yes.
Well, young kids, tell me if you can stay alive if anyone is.
I'd like a lot of different, um, the one that I really want to get into. For state, uh, that's my. That's other ones that possible.
Good for you. Congratulations. Thank you superintendent for making these recommendations. Two good choices and. Thank you to her. All right. We got Johnny Appleseed presentation. Are they prepared? Yeah, they are. All right. You've got a hot app to follow.
Right, we have Mrs. King, Natalie.
So I just want to thank you for inviting us here. Very excited to be able to highlight some of the things that we do. I'm driving today, I guess. The last time I was here was in the spring when we started to talk about budgets, things I had talked about with some of the improvement. Um, and we didn't waste any time. We got right off. Things that the district paid for was, um, refurbishing the new gym. As you can see, Mr. Bernard, I can. When there have been visitors to the building, I bring them around and I show them the caf, the gym, the cafeteria, because I'm. I thought it still has that new gym floor smell to it. So we're very excited and thankful that. Back for somebody years and it's all right now. And I think that's one of the things that I found, um, because I've been at Johnny Apple since. So we could get used to things. One of the things that. I was. And I had the PTO in Evans. I would go in at different times of the day or like after school and look around and go. My goodness, I've done it now with new eyes and they are right. To do some updates.
Yeah. So this is one of our big projects this summer that was actually fully funded by our PTA. Kind of thing. Budgeted twenty thousand dollars to. Patient at the factory and the stage I'll show you in a minute. Um, and improve some of our sound systems. All the boards on the side, we redid all the sound boards. I I did those. Yep, she did. All the price was really high, so I figured I'm going to learn how to upholster, so I did that too. But, um, don't be concerned about the Pittsburgh colors. This is actually Johnny Appleseed colors. Um, we're red. And white and our custodian begged us not to put white on the bottom. We said a light gray, the white is on the top. Um, but it just looks so nice. And and we'll talk about the security measures in a little bit, but if you notice the windows look a little tinted back there. So we have a new tint. But it also is one way glass, so we can see out and no one. Um, but the cafeteria, it just looks beautiful. From the area, come on over and see it. Yes, I'll be happy to show you. Yes. This is the stage, you know, stage is old. I, I, um. It has never been redone. So when they were actually finishing it, they were pulling out those old iron mams and just saying, wow, this is a. Um, the stage, it's beautiful. They redid the project. They turned it to its natural color. He didn't do anything fancy. We really should clear on there. On the curtains brand new. Uh, again, one of those things where if you're looking at it, you don't think it's a big deal until you get in there and. We have a lot of plans for this. Um, we're excited to have the basic teacher, Mr. Downey. He likes it more for our chorus and our band. Patients. Um, we're excited to have our theater club because we used. Um, our tap dancing teacher. Uh, we're excited to bring that back into us. We get that, those fun programs going again, just to have, um, visitors. Great, great piece to do it. Put a lot of resources into our media center. Our pride is usually. Give them one. Is up to date on. Um, and the floor was buckling and also a safety issue. Email me. Um, another place where we really looked into our kinds of security measures that we had around. Have added. Tinted glass across the cafeteria windows, so. Also now have, this is my favorite, tinted glass in the atrium. My office is just off the atrium. I can't tell you how many people would knock on the glass. Can it, can you open the door? Thinking, I'm working right now, but our secretary. Um, it was a fish tank. So every student that walked by, anyone who was in the atrium, it just didn't feel comfortable. So putting this one way glass in, this made a huge difference. Um, so we can see out, but no one can see in. Um, we've really tightened up our JA visitor badges now that people are coming back into our building. I mean, it's been pretty tight with COVID for a couple of years. We've really. Now people in and out. But now, um, our, our secretary stopped. They're just so great at monitoring this stuff. We don't buzz anybody in. They go to the door for every single visitor and they need JA visitor badges and the sign and protocol now. Um, it's just a lot tighter and we're waiting for installation on our entry keypads. So we have two doors that don't have them right now. Um, but they are doors that it'd be nice if we had them on there because they're right near our playground area for kindergarten and it would be nice to add those.
So one of the things I'm very excited about, please. That's a combination of our grades three, four. Um. What I've always looked at is how JA compares to. Have exceeded. We really haven't. Our scores are good. Um, two thousand nineteen was probably our best set of score. But even then, we were not hitting the scores that the state had. We're still just the. But in ELA, they better than this. Yeah. And in science, we did better than most, but we didn't. So another way to look at the data. That we're really excited about is if I look at the grade three. Last year in ELA, fifty-three percent of those that exceeded. Their expectation. And the end of the state was forty-four. So when I look at things like that and I think of what our students. That for years during the pandemic. And compare them to. And I think they've done great and we want to celebrate them. Yeah, grade three, sixty-two percent of students that exceeded expectations compared to the state. A grade. Still, I compared thirty-eight for the state. And we're right there in that forty-one percent hit forty-two, but right there. Those are our current fifth graders. So our fifth grade teachers know that that is an area that they. Take a look at. And then our last year's fifth grade class figures.
They were above the state, they were ELA in math. They were slightly below in science, but. Got another area.
Excuse me, one second. When you say the state, is that an average of every community? So we're really not looking at comparable communities, either size wise or.
Yeah, it's all the.
So we need to look a little further, dive in a little further to try to look. I mean, I, nothing against.
No, and then.
Some whole town.
That can be done.
Or Boston or or Concord. We're looking at other comparable communities. That's.
So keep in mind the Congress, the W's, they're in that state average.
Right. Yeah, I think that's the point. I think it's, I think it is even better when you look at it from that perspective.
Right.
I think two years we haven't been this high percentage wise in comparison. Been below a lot of times. So this was a big achievement.
Huge.
Um, yeah. If anything, you could see there's an increase though, that's there. So.
They're also.
So these are.
Well, instead, they're different, so but my third question. Is those fourth graders, because we're always talking about the third grade, are we not?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and. At the conference, am I right or am I wrong? They weren't focusing on the third grade. They were focusing on the fourth grade. I don't know why.
Do you know that I've historically? I think the students have had a more difficult time in fourth grade across the board. I think it's the test.
Just an observation that I've seen looking at stats for. Across states. Younger grades seem to have fallen during the pandemic, but they've seemed to have bounced back the fastest. Is that something that you got?
Yes.
Yeah. And it seems like that middle stage age is ones that it felt less, but they're having a hard time getting caught back up to where they were before.
And if you think about it during the pandemic, a lot of those, um, years have been. National years. So. Foundational years. So for them to have missed a chunk of those foundational years or have done them more, so not quite in age-based person. Less of those intervention structures that we have placed for our students. Plus, we were like, this is something to celebrate because we are pretty much regular in 2019.
Let's, let's, let's look at the next slide. I love this one.
Can I go to, talk about MCAS just for one second? I think, keep in mind just that the year before, the students had half an MCAS. So they had one day compared to two days. Just the, the, um, the stamina for students to take these. So for two years, they didn't have that. They didn't get used to it. It's hard work to. And so, um, it took time for those students. To develop the stamina to sit and take those tests. Hey, they had states of tests.
I was just gonna say to Ron's point, next year, Ron, those third graders are.
That's where I was going with my questions.
So we'll see how they perform this year.
I was waiting for someone to decide me to ask dirty questions.
Oh, you remember next year, because we'll be asking that again.
But the dirty, unscientific question is as follows. And you can, you can yell at me.
Go ahead, me. What's the question?
The question is this. In your papers. Those fourth graders. What was the percentage last year? Do you have that?
I think that, I actually have that for the math data.
Because those fourth graders.
I think that was part of what she was getting at, Ron, is they didn't take a full test.
Okay, all right, I buy that. So they're dirty numbers. I get that, but I love dirty numbers.
Well, next year you'll be able to.
Yeah, next year.
Next year, you compare apples to apples.
Someday, someday I'll send you our math data that I have that by code.
Very wrong.
Now, this is all done on computers too.
Yes.
Does that, you see the difference with, with the computer based on. Are they rushing through it on the computer more than reading something?
One of our areas we're gonna work a lot on this year is the writing piece because they do start to. Run out of steam when it comes time for the typing portion of these tests. I mean, their, the essays that they're expected to type. Are quite, um. They're quite involved. They're text-based responses. The kids are really working on that and they, I think that they've actually gotten better with the computer. We've been pretty much dependent on these computers for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
So we've definitely seen a change and a lot of the curriculum we have now is aligned to look very similar to what our MCAS test looks like. So using, um, here's the McGraw-Hill and the, the structure of those online assessments, the interactive tests that we have, it looks exactly the same. So the kids, when they see it, they're prepared. They're ready. They're ready. Um, it's a, it's a hefty task. It's a lot. Stamina to get through those.
Glad to see with my daughter. On the computer, she can question to get through it.
Yeah.
Time, read the question. Awesome. Because they're so fast-paced on the computer to begin with.
Correct.
They're trying to get through it and they're fast, which I wonder if it makes out.
That was a point. It's big, why? You said that she goes faster. He, he. Your child have a cell phone? No. Okay, that's. Those that have cell phones. Trying to go faster on the computers or not?
Um, I don't know. So.
It's, it's a dirty question. I know it's wrong, Ron. The whole world's moving.
And, and look at tonight. We have two student reports, members of the school committee, who read everything off of their personal computers. And we have paper in front of us and they're just, in the whole, the whole world is just shifting. Whether you like it or not, it's just shifting to fill it out on a computer.
I just wanted, if a kid uses.
They, they.
Uses, use her, use his or her telephone, they go faster on the computer or not?
But to her point.
If you know the answer, I think you can go pretty clear.
I think a lot of this too comes down to teaching students how to persevere, right? And a little bit more in terms of effort. So what kind of effort do you, if you put in this much effort, what are you gonna see for outcome? And so a lot of the instructional stuff that our students, that's what being, and that's what teachers are working on a lot this year. Being out with the state rubrics required for writing, let's see what you wrote compared to what they are expecting to see here. And just really working with the kids on that, teaching them about perseverance, because at the end of the day, they are exhausted. And this test is over. So when we see scores like this, we celebrate because.
That's why I think, that's why I think math is, score's a little bit hard too.
Yeah.
Because it's easier to answer that question than to your point, typing it all.
Correct. Correct. And even those, they come in part A, part B, part C, those math problems.
Yeah.
These kids really have to work hard through part A in order to get to part B. And if part A is incorrect, then part B, they're already off. But it's just amazing what they're capable of doing. It's amazing what they're being asked to do and, and seeing, seeing where it's at.
All right, question. So thank you, sir.
Thinking back when I took the MCAS, um. Do you remember when every year we would do it on paper and then it shifted to public computer? And I, I don't know if this has any like testament to like how the scores changed in any way, but I just remember that general attitude. Thought everyone was pretty excited to. Because, uh, like, a lot of people would have, our teachers were very like adamant about the way you had to fill in the bubbles, like the way everything. They went everything correct and, and that stuff, like, me personally, like, I had a tremor. I still do, but like, uh, I worked on it. But like, at the time, I, I had a lot of trouble writing, so I'd have someone like, figure format it. It took like hours, like, you know, it's just, I, I think overall, I remember.
And just, and you're still teaching students to rip things apart.
Yes.
To, to pause for a second, read it thoroughly.
Yes.
Make sure there's no tricks in there. Tear it apart and then.
The one thing they get on test day is a white piece of paper. A lot of them to use for their scrap paper. So teachers have gotten really great at teaching them how to fully use that white piece of paper. What are we gonna do with this simple white piece of paper? It must be successful. It just, it comes down to that.
I mean, you're fast on the answers, Ron, if you know the answer, but if you have to critically think.
If you know the answer, if you know the answer and you're fast with the answer, then you ask yourself, what did I miss? I'm historically, historically.
The other part I do.
I go back and go over and over and over. You know, yes, the sign is insanity. You can go over and over the same thing. You get the same answer. You're doing something wrong.
Proves one thing. We all learn differently. Okay, go ahead.
All right, we'll go along to access.
Yes.
So the access test is the test that's given to all ELA students. Anywhere. Um, and seventy-six percent of our students are in love. Then, we have a lot of level ones, level twos, our new numbers, and they all, seventy-six percent means. Don't read that. And next slide. I'll dig deeper into that data. So when a student is flipped, that means that they've, they've, um, they've passed the access test. They're successful on domains, reading, writings.
And they're now labeled. And they're now labeled as a former.
Yeah.
Language.
So the fact that we had thirty-three percent of the students in grades one through five were able to flip out of the program is, is a huge. Big goal.
Yeah.
That's the goal of the program. Um, so those are our success story. So we're excited about that. Kindergarten doesn't count because you.
Wonderful. Okay, so moving forward, we're pretty excited about this. Um, brought back some great things this year in our school. Our JA community is known for. One of the things that we do is school-wide read aloud. So every student in the school is reading the same book at the same time with their classroom teachers. Um, we have cycled through a variety of books. Um, but we cycled right back to the very first one that we started with years ago, which was Charlotte's West. And, uh, with the permission of one of our retiring third grade teachers this year, that is her book and you're not allowed to read that. Um, she let us do that this year and actually took, uh, Wednesday, she'll be reading the final chapter out loud to our, uh, students via Google Meet. Um, but that's how Patty and myself, we kicked it off, was we read the kids, everyone logged on to Google Meet in their classrooms and we were on their screens in the room. And we read them the first two chapters together to get them started. And so we made it up to, on, actually, October thirty-first, the chapter was Wilbur Goes to the County Fair. So we actually hosted our own Johnny Appleseed County Fair for the kids. This idea came from, um, one of our amazing teachers years ago. She was an ESL teacher and one of her students said. What is the county fair? What's a county fair? And they had never experienced it. So she had this big, brand-new idea to bring the county fair to Johnny Appleseed to teach us what it's like. So we had live animals. We had everything, the volunteers for this. It was just unbelievable and our PTO helped sponsor some of it, but again, we stick up. We had a real-life play there that was, um. Came to visit from Henry. Yeah, from Connecticut. And this is outreach of our, this is outreach of our JA community. So actually Stacy Galvin, our coordinator. This was a family friend that came, uh, dig. Uh, we had Low Ranches, uh, Low Places Ranch in Lumber come with the goats. They had bunnies. Um, we had a student bringing her. And, and like our teacher on the bottom here, the bottom middle picture, there's a donkey in that picture and a horse, but that was one of our teachers. Um, she has a horse park. Picture on the right were different, um, activities. The kids did a stand activity where they made, uh, parachutes. Just like the spiders release at the end of the book. Um, we had concessions and they had popcorn. They had lemonade. It was.
But then, right, but you can't have a fair without contests. So we did have a, a one-day door decorating contest for all the firemen out there. Just one day. And we had, um, you know, uh, people then judge and, um.
Doors had to be Charlotte's West themed. Um, we had a variety of tanks on that, that the students participated in and rated a lot of the doors. These are our winners.
So the winners, ESL teachers, um, those are all different languages.
So the webs had different, um, sayings of them in different languages on the left there. And then on the right, this is a fifth grade class. The students all leave their own names into the.
Wow. I think that's.
Somebody wants to bet an eye.
Somebody wants to win.
And then, then the contest continued because our staff, our staff is fairly veteran, but we do have a lot of new teachers that haven't got to enjoy the competitive nature of our staff. So we did a staffed pie contest, um, that, which was strictly volunteer, but there were seventeen pies that the staff members, um, contributed. And we had judges there and actually we invited a, a community member, Bill Brady, to come in because we don't know how to taste grapefruit. So he came in and tasted pies with us and helped us to come up with our winners. And the winning pie was actually an apple pie. It was, it was great.
So we're very excited. Our future events, actually tonight, um, just there at the Leamster Public Library, we have the alumni. We invite the ELA students and their parents to the library. Um, while the students are having story, venting them and doing an odd activity and visiting the children's library, the parents, um, take a tour of the library and. Encourage them to get library. Which just about. So this is nice.
Yeah, we have, um, I'm gonna be presenting this soon. We haven't picked a date yet because now we have our parking situated with the church. Uh, thank you so much for that. Um, but we're gonna be having a social media awareness presentation for parents. I do that with our, um, third, fourth and fifth graders. I created, um, myself, well, with the help of guidance, my guidance department, we sit down together and we talk about, um, really social media and. Positive and negative, um, effects of being on social media. And just basically, I call the presentation, be in the know. So understand what it's all about and have the information. You know, venture off to middle school. And I think my, I just think that it starts in third grade when they're, you know, they're, they're doing their gaming at home and they're talking to people who may not know or they're. It's about education, that's educating them. I do spend a lot of time on this. Um, we did it at the beginning of October with our students because it is spring, it was. And I just think it's a good time to talk about text messaging and, you know, using our phones, really. Um. And so I'm gonna be giving the same presentation to parents. We're gonna take parents in and we'll do it different, um, or three different nights. So I'm gonna do a third grade presentation because it's slightly different from the older grades and then I'll do. Out of the hell of that.
Excited to be able to bring back our literacy nights. Last year we did, um, escape rooms. And first. And we have a very active PTO that's gonna. And instead of fun run, we're gonna go. Bring back our, last night, last year we had it, but it was dry. Um, so we'll be back in charge of that. Yes. Um, so we'll be able to bring back field trips and. Well, we do have to focus on, trying to have some tourism. It is a problem. We have some things in place that we're trying to communicate with the people throughout. In my Sunday message, I backed about the being. On time. Just have data trackers. When we track the. Into the. Give us. The screen first, guidance, my seven. July people. Talked about reasons to ride kids. And. Backs and. You know, so. It is a problem. Right now, in one of my messages, I said, your challenges missed four more days. That's ten percent. We have, your child missed one day and quite frankly. Already missed, missed only.
And it was COVID?
Um, yes, there's definitely been COVID, but not everybody's required to contact or break. So. Um, but there's definitely been a mixture of variety illnesses, but there has been some travel. Lot of travel. So I think it's just getting back into the understanding that matters. Um, certainly we don't want kids coming. Or something, you know. Spreading, but at the same time, um, it's time to start rethinking, you know, when to go on vacation, when. Okay, and so I think, I think what we hope for this. Time, we sort of lost track of that a little bit. Um, and we are sending out letters. We're. And trying to test to be.
I'm kinda thinking, it's just my opinion, eventually we'll be in a hybrid situation. There are positives to everything. Combination of so much time at work and so much time at home, that education with technology today, somewhat of a hybrid system where. You know, the. I, whatever the reasons might be, but it, it.
What are you talking about?
A hybrid system where people would look, would still continue. Okay, get over it. But people get it. People work. We're on a hybrid system right now.
Learn, behave.
You, you, we're on a hybrid system right now.
Break in them.
No, I didn't say that. But, but let's face it, where do most people get an MBA today? Where do they get it? Online. Then, then, so education has to accept the fact that there's gonna be a hybrid situation at some level, at some point, at some grade level. And so I don't know if that's the answer. I don't, you just said, you don't know why they're not coming. I guess we need to find out.
That's why we're educating. That's, that's where we're at. Educating on the importance of.
But, but why I'm still was coming? Has anybody asked why? Is it? And what do they say?
Been sick. Dentist appointments. That's, that's that thing we explain too, is come to school even if you are late, um, or if you're going to need to dismiss. They'll come in because there's critical things being taught on those days. We don't want your child to get.
Answers.
I look down at the individual level. And yes, those families that I try to talk. And to be. And every family has a different story. We try to keep that in mind too. Um, and that's why we reach out. And yes, there are. There were some families that we've noticed that had.
I'm something a second. Pretty quick. As you see. A person. That's the free.
I look at it at the individual basis.
This, this is the number. This, the first, this, okay.
The D is certainly there, but we haven't looked at, we look at it more or less on student, individualize it. We look at that student. We look at the number of the days they've been out. Maybe that particular student we've noticed has been out more on Fridays or Mondays. We talk to families at, but to look at all of the attendance that way, it's there. We haven't really approached it that way. We're kind of looking more or less now at. Who's at ten percent at this point? And now let's dig deeper into life. And sometimes it does say. And it does say, you know, we don't have any information in it and that's the families we're sitting on the phone calling and saying. Executive days in a row or.
It's the last.
That's what we need to find out too, is that. That's what we need to find out too, exactly. That student connectedness, you know, what's the motivation to. A big part of it.
Great. Can I? Be finished the presentation and I have a question to be, and I just want to put.
This is our very last.
Um, so just some things that the looking at was. Back to both, um, it's for new. The basic things that we have to think about as a school. Here's, but, um. Um, I think everyone. Parking areas need to be. We are thrilled and we're thankful. I've been arranging search now. But if you look at our, our driveways, uh. They're, they're falling apart.
Yes, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And having been out to school. Thank you so much.
Great. Yeah. So, um, I just wanted to say incredible, incredible job with this. Thank you. It really is amazing. And, and you guys did an incredible job all the way across the board. I love seeing what you guys did with the ELL students, the incredible progress there. I like, I like the graph because the, the, the blue on that. Left hand side was lower than it was in 2019 and 2020. And when looking at your MCAS scores, they were better than they were before the pandemic. So. All I can say is clearly you have a great team. You are all working together and it's great that you have some competition because that always helps too. Um, as far as the, the absenteeism, do you find that there's any relationship between families and students that are really engaged in these events? And likelihood that they are, could come to school more often in your relationship there?
We're just starting to get the events going again too. So that's part of our. Patient.
One of the things I want parents to realize is that eventually it's going to affect the child's self-esteem. Because they're not going to feel that connectedness with their classroom. And if they're struggling because they're not there, their self-esteem is going to. That's what I worry about for them. Being to leave JA, they're proud of themselves.
And the last question I had was around the, so the PTO raised $20,000 or was it the cafeteria?
Checking the booster.
Wow. I'd like, um, you know, I, I look at, we have a lot of federal funds that came in and, and did that come before that brought to the intention of.
So when you do booster fund, you have to have a. A project that will enrich the environment. So part of our plan will be a donation. To be honest with you, we didn't really raise as much of. It, but we hadn't done a school like. Big fundraiser like that. Um, the community got very involved. And when we put the project together, we had to come up with a big project. Catch them. I think they, they need to add forth. Yes. Um, so when we talked about initially, we were like, let's get a playground, you know, we're like, well, let's redo the playground. While after looking into price of playgrounds, um, we could probably get a swing for $20,000. So we then looked more at inside the building. And our PTO got pretty excited about it when we talked about the stage. That's kind of where this all started was what can we do and, and put the kids at the forefront, right? Like what can we do in our building that's going to bring out the best of our kids? And one of the things that we had previous, like prior to COVID and purchase, prior to, um. There's a lot of these clubs. One of them is the theater club. Our, our students, every kid signed up for theater club. And every, you know, our, our chorus and band is so big right now. We have to go to, we have to go to LHS to perform. We don't have. At our school. So the stage seems like a great place to target more student involvement and things. And the PTO loved that idea. They're very excited about it. So they, they kind of ran off with it. And then from the stage, it's kind of like, we are with the stage, we're in the cap. And honestly, a lot of our vendors were parents that came in and did the jobs, um, with us. And it was just, it was just awesome reaching out to our. However, the way it did. And it is, and, um, there, they, they got themselves kind of up and running again as a PTO. It's great.
Yeah. Uh, just really quick on the parking thing. Uh, I want to echo your thanks to the mayor because I was reached out to about that issue. So thank you for this work on that. Um, but I'm curious if, you know, when you talk about repaid, if there's any room that the school owns that. Could be used for parking in the future because obviously it'd be nice if we had that space.
There's a little tiny corner.
Okay.
Um, that could add, I think, um, they. They do it right. They might be able to add maybe eighteen more. Um, which would put this down. Probably have.
Okay.
And help us look around and get creative because that's the thing is we've had the safe parking lot forever. Now maybe there is a way to.
We, we own four acres. Problem is bike up behind your house, in that subdivision in the back. Acres, but it's the cost of open detention base and all that. Is it, is it worth doing that? This is continuing to rent. That's what we look at over there. Build the park. It's not, you can't just cut things down and pay them. Hey, that's gone. That's, that's completely off the. Last thing I wanted to say, I, I, I think all wonderful things, moving in the right direction. It. The. Uh, absentee pot is going to be individual. It is. There's no way. At one time we had Mr. Mabel and we had juvenile. He's upset and they're banging on the door, say Johnny hasn't been. You know, you can approach us two different ways. You either get Johnny to school or we're going to end up in court. I'm sure behind, I think you answered it. It's, it's complex. It's just not, you're not going to wave a wand. Tell a parent those students got to be in school. And they have many mechanisms to go around. Office and all that. But the real core problem is client to client. That's what, you know, I don't know whether there are other staff people within the school, Steve, that can help with that because. It's not just the JA if you're really sorry from last meeting. It's system wide. So it seems to me that. Somewhere there has to be a dedication towards students and why is it they're not, and I, I don't want to generalize it because I have no clue. One, one family's reason for it might not be in the, I think you're going to, if there's 20 kids, you're going to have 20 of them. Still widely not. And some of it may be. Our kids go to school for the extracurriculum. That's what keeps them there until they find something. I, I don't ever want to generalize on that. That's tricky. And so it's more diagnostic and it's going to require more effort to find out. So just a blanket statement from anybody, from us, anybody saying, oh, kids got to get back to school, isn't going to do it. And. So I don't know, Steve, what is our initiative towards?
Certainly a multi-level, like everyone, very teacher. Teachers, guidance. A communication that goes before even just phone call. Barrett Conker. Perfect place when you actually have a barren city in front of you, talk about. Oh, you're right. There's not one answer. I think I. I've done a nice. Ask them. But I like the approach, you know, part from adding Devon, that it's really at the individual. So you can look at the data and the trends, but until you actually talk. Things and then unity, school-based community. Draw. That helps. Classroom. Classroom then. That's something really young.
So have you, have you felt like you've brought some students back?
I do.
Chronic.
Yeah, I do. I just feel like reaching out, talking to them. I mean, but just with, just within the last couple of weeks, we've had some. Friends who went for the full day, first day appointment. Now I'm noticing that they turn into more of. The tardy versus being fully absent.
And that's societal. That's not just schools. That's the workplace.
I mean, it's, I mean, I just think. And making someone aware that you're aware, also step in the right direction, that we care about your kid, we care about your situation. On your parents.
Oh, you're just a percentage.
And tardies. Instead of making.
Yeah, that's.
When they come in tardy, this is what they're missing. And I don't think.
So it sounds like a good thing. I'm trying to understand this because you made a good presentation, but I really care about those kids that come and why. But it, it sounds like they're coming to school. They haven't dropped out completely. They haven't vanished. So they're coming. And, and it sounds like there's kind of three categories. People that would, you know, strolling, they, they wake up late. I don't know. They stroll. Some kids get dismissed early in the day. That seems like a, a, a lack of understanding the importance of a student being there from the beginning to the end. And, and so it sounds like there are a couple of different areas to concentrate on. And that's a lot. Some of it is just societal. I mean, that's anybody that wants to type in, right? It's societal. In the workplace, we deal with these things not often, but when we deal with them, right? And there are people that, so I, I, I think the, the good thing is they're coming. At some point they're coming. This is not coming on a regular basis. And so that's, that's your, your, your. Challenge.
If I can make a final comment.
Yes.
It's not just the student product. Cause I, I don't think our PowerPoint really, um. Proudly are of our veteran teachers.
Sure. Absolutely.
I think, um, you know, they work great together. I just want to celebrate our team. We have fantastic. Then includes guidance department. Cars, the parent professionals who work so hard. We have the life skills plus, classes at our school. They work so hard. And that's what is really proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. We're now going to move on to approval in a minute.
Take a motion.
I can.
Any questions, any resolutions? Think it looks okay. All right. All in favor, signify the usual man of those polls. Thank you. And now move on to subcommittee reports. We have policy subcommittee. Ali. All right. Okay. And then finance updates. Do we have finance updates?
Hi guys.
Didn't spend any money? Come on. Now I want some further investigation into that.
Yeah.
Didn't spend, no. Melanie. With a big smile on.
Took your advice and stayed home.
Why? What's that smile for, Melanie?
Well, I stayed home on, I stayed home on the wrong day. There were dobbies and I missed them.
And Ron thought it was because of him.
I'll tell you, when those dogs come into the MAGA building, everybody smiles. Everybody.
Do you know who, do you know who Meg, Meg Gallagher was?
I, I have a photo of her in our office.
She's the first principal of the school.
Yeah.
Right? Ruled an iron fist. Nobody messed with M A J.
She looks like that in the photo.
No one messed with it.
Different era.
No. And if she told you to come to school, you came to school.
Yeah.
All right. So what happened? Do you have any, um?
Well, I mean, you know, I, I gotta say JA kind of, um, said it all for the evening, right? There's a lot going on. A lot of updates, a lot of things, good things happening in the schools and, you know, we're keeping busy and trying to. Trying to update the schools and really kind of give back to the schools with all this extra funding we have. So, so, you know, I loved her presentation. I thought that was fantastic. I love that the gym still looks brand new. I don't get to see those photos. I just get to see the bills that come through.
Speaking of bills. So do we have any?
Yes, we have warrants tonight. So who wants to volunteer? Brandon.
You did a great job reading it though. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the following warrants, starting with warrant thirteen that totals four thousand, four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Warrant fourteen, that totals two million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and four cents. Warrant fifteen, that totals two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight cents. Warrant sixteen, that totals two million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars cents. And warrant seventeen totaling three million, six hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight, fifty-five cents, sorry, extra pennies. For ransom revolving, warrant thirteen, that totals a hundred and six thousand, fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Warrant fourteen, that totals two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Warrant fifteen, that totals, uh, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Warrant sixteen, that totals six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. And warrant seventeen, that totals four hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty.
All right. Any questions about, they were like $10 million just went, less than 40 seconds. No. Okay, it's not. All in favor, signify the usual man. They'll suppose. Thank you, Melanie. We'll let you know next time when the.
Yes, please.
Rescue dogs that come in.
Yeah.
Next time we have some.
Can we just take pictures when we send money of what it's being used?
So let me. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And surplus equipment.
There's been a delay on getting the list.
We absolutely, and I say this to all city buildings, we absolutely have to keep the car. That tends to, I don't know where it comes from, but in the, at night, there'll be nothing there by morning. Like that will be about.
The night is music.
Yes, things move around. Mischievous, mysteriously at night it moves around and it shows up in all the. But so they're issued for the fine. Okay. So we're going to, we don't have anything to declare surplus. So we'll move on to, we did the warrants. Now we'll move on to new and, uh.
And just Ron and I did go to the.
Yes.
Last week, which was very good. Just, uh, equity, uh. Uh, diversity and inclusion were the big, um, thing ticket items that were. Throughout the entire. Creating and promoting. Building leadership. Leading governing. Parents feeding, uh, equity and intentional practice and, uh, MIA. Leadership, uh, our previous principal. Steve Dubinsky was there. He said to say hello to everyone. Finally, and see happy.
Well, that's been a passion of his for years.
Yes, it absolutely has. Um, but in any case, you know, it was thoughtful. Um, I know Ron went to some other concerts, uh, than I did, so we tried. Um, there was a lot of good information, um, uh, indigenous tribe, uh, they're always presentation every year and that's all. Powerful. Are good speakers. You know.
Did we get any, any wins on those resolutions that benefited the urban communities?
They, they all passed, but there was one that they really had a hard time. You have, you have some people. Even voiced on like. By their only time of the year that they.
So what was the issue?
One guy didn't like the word child. Bill Percy.
Oh, what was the issue?
The issue was the, uh, issue was. January city. And he didn't, the guy, he spent the month. On the word at child. Child or not child, we all have our inner child.
Don't even look at me like that, Greg. What, what other word would you use for child?
But you're not going to 15. Like we're not, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's not say anything to me later.
I'm just telling you what happened.
Let him find his time.
And it wasn't Ron, so.
And they kept on to, to the point where I stood up and I said, look, why don't we just table this? And then maybe call, call a timeout. Everybody sit down. And then maybe call, call a timeout, everybody sit down, the ones who don't like the words, sit down, iron and out, then come back in 10 minutes, didn't get it done. Oh, no, they just.
Waste of reason, Ron.
Waste of reason for what?
Tell the issue, what was the issue?
The guy didn't like the word child.
And that was written into what issue, what was the issue?
Thank you.
The sanctuary city.
Sanctuary city, all right, all right, don't know it.
Uh, but at the last, like, there was kids already escaped in a match and they ripped the floor and like, they would just nitpick. And.
Such is life today.
Yeah, that's the problem. Got it all wrong. Seriously, it was almost like they were auditioning for the House of Burgers, the weight protection rush, Patrick Henry or John Hancock. It just, it, it was crazy.
Yeah, no, this is the new world, I mean, this, this is, this is what you are, in a faith, I mean, it's, it's, so you gotta, either you jump out of the system or you learn to work within it, right? And hopefully there are voices of reasons that can say, and it's you were the voice of reason, Ron, that said, hey, can we, you know?
If I have to be the voice of reason.
That's what I'm saying.
If I have. If there are lots of bunch of, but if we're the reasons, that's me, the train is falling off the track.
Right.
I've always said that.
Hey.
And I mean it, humbly.
Anything else?
Right, I was just curious as to what, but so it was good, I mean, all in all.
Yeah, it was good, and hopefully next year, people can plan a little bit of time to be, uh, because it is helpful to have. You know, workshops, but, and it was nice networking with, uh, people, communities around us.
Just that, some classes, there were some classes, for their reason. But, you know, I was tempted, have my wife go to one of the classes. You know, she didn't have to show her name because some people didn't have their dog tags, but I wanted to know what the heck they were talking about in that class.
Training place.
But, uh.
Well, they needed my, my hope, I hope. Some of the conversation, which I thought was important, that came out last month, was, you know, the, the state auditor that's leaving, that put together the report, saying, you know, for years, we've been underfunded, and we're all like attacking each other on funding, I was in a community today.
Keynote speech to some of us.
I was at a community today, and they were $4 to $7 million under net school spending. And again, fighting amongst each other all these years, only to find out there are millions, like, $15 million underfunded, based on the, and state auditor is leaving, she has no, she has no reason other than to, to issue this. And hopefully, and if question one passes, hopefully legislature will continue to maintain their commitment towards education and use those, that other extra funded as an enhancement rather than, well, we're taking it here so we can cut here, that's, that's not the point of why people vote. So, this may be a new opportunity for education in the state.
Biggest thing was the guy who said equity.
All right, so we, uh, move on to enrollment report, yes?
Just a reminder to back in the break, A R M's, uh, football, and the high school musical is November 18th.
Actually.
What's the December 3rd, the crack, is that the school, or is that somebody else coming in to rent it?
I don't know, I think it's a dance.
So they're renting the hall.
I was actually waiting, like, for the meeting here at school, I was watching. Yeah, yeah.
And Melissa's, I don't know, passing, starring role.
Oh, very nice, can you get us some basic?
Yeah.
That's what happens with you, it's like, I'm partying for tickets. All right, Josh, on the new business?
We're doing.
I'm starting a new business, I was able to, um, visit Northwest, for his principal. Nice discussion with them, new leadership position, because very excited in the year to kind of get rolling with some things, they have a lot of good ideas, a lot of things. I don't want to, um, putting those out without them being able to come here and either defend them or, uh, you know, I'd like to have them represent. Um, I was able to visit the classroom, the grades, minus kindergarten, I didn't go there. Yeah, it was a little, oh, but it, um, it was very impressive, the school was very clean, I think everybody was working together, the team. Um, they did know I was coming, I don't know if that's the usual, I would, I would assume that it is, because it didn't look like anything was. Before training, um, to your point about hybrid, um, education, I think the kids now, the amount of kids who are jumping on the phone books throughout the classroom and at splitting time when, you know, some kids are getting caught up, I think they're getting that even in class, for example.
Right, so it's.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we're eliminating education, I'm saying if there's a, when we started out, on the school committee with a program where if a student was ill and couldn't attend class, that student wasn't just, hey, we'll see you in three months when you're feeling better, we'll send you some cards, we're going to keep that student engaged and keep them up on what's going on. That's, that's an option for somebody that may need that, not for somebody that says, I don't wait that way, I, I don't wake up, I'm, I'm, until I had breakfast and coffee and whatever else till 10, so I'm not coming in, that's, you know, that's, that's, they're not going to run up the phone book, so I don't want anybody to think. I'm suggesting that somehow, you know, we're going to revert back.
Although I did visit the break, um, also was able to attend the Northwest PTO meeting since the last meeting, um, and they're a growing group, they're asking for more participation, I don't know, PTO organization. They have another, um, theory of bringing back community events and, and having night events, they're having the process pasta supper this Thursday night. Um, they are looking for volunteers, Sal and I will be in the kitchen.
I saw Sal already cooking.
Making your salads, yeah.
Um, effective.
Yeah, and if, if you've never experienced a pasta supper, it's a good night, um, for the headshot, Hugo, amazing job. Um, one of the, one of the major reasons why I volunteered to be in the kitchen. Have, uh, issue of Hugo.
1:30 December on Thursday, and you guys know I could sell this.
I know our maple can sell.
So maple and vanilla, I'll come there.
Did attend the, yeah, kind of food truck festival, and that also been very well, well, good nipping.
But it was good counseling.
Yeah, it was counseling. So my only suggestion must have it earlier in the season or like in, but, um, that was.
The, uh, bingo at Northwest, um, that was the most populated bulldog thing that they had in years. Um, and it's a new, it's a post-COVID bulldog bingo, so people are ready to come back, oh yeah, so it's great to see these, these events, these nights happening. I think it's worth all that time to support them anyway.
If the bingo, if the pasta supper was the main like bingo, it's gonna, I saw the pictures, it's gonna be great, folk can be a great event.
People, you saw the Halloween parade?
Yeah.
That's an indication that people want to get out, get engaged and have fun again, and the gates are open, we're just not always ready for them to show up. Yes, but speaking of that, just one other thing, is I sent an email to the superintendent today and a couple others, just on, you know, what we're, whether, we can debate COVID for the rest of our lives, does it benefit, the reality is, we've got flu season coming, colds, we've spent, between the Cities Care Act and Esser money, we've spent a considerable amount. You know, with the equality con, on systems, there were grants that, um, for HAB systems, that I think we took advantage of. And just asking that we get a report next time in the school committee, maybe a presentation like they did here, start with the parents and everybody kind of knows that we've taken some action in our buildings, and not just on security, but on the health and care of. We spent a lot, and then what's planned down the road, so if you could just get that, see one for the.
Did you talk to Mel?
Yes. Because, I mean, anybody knows somebody with COVID right now, and not debate masks, no masks, this, that, but, um, you know, air quality in the buildings and.
That's on here.
We, we had, yeah, we basically had a meeting and, uh, and going to revert back to the original plan, um, get the specifics, get the specs out, and get to the bid and see exactly where we're.
I've seen about 500 plans over the last 20 years.
It did, and so we'll get the original plan, talk about possibly putting out these, and so we're going to bid it up, see exactly what the prices are. Um, things are slowing down economy wise, so maybe there's, uh, prices are starting to come down in certain areas and supply is getting caught up. So it just might be that we're in a bad spot.
Yeah, if we can see that, like.
But we're looking at January, February, Steve, I think we're, I think, maybe just reading out the. The good news is the skateboard slash, ring, no, bicycle park is coming along, looks like it'll be pouring crumb, and that's exciting.
Awesome.
Yeah, and then we have the mayor's youth council, and we all try to pick projects, the students are in, excellent, so we met with, uh, the superintendent and principal here. And they decided they're going to work with the police department on the filler truck. And nothing against the Toys for Tots at all, but what we found is the Toys for Tots end up elsewhere, and then we're not trying to serve in the. Back area, and then people say, well, where did the toys go, they collected the toys department, and then the Worcester, we're thinking. They're distribution area, and then we go back to try to get them, so what we've been doing over the last several years is doing like filler truck, the target and all, so, well, my, people are unbelievably generous. And so they're going to work with us on, on that project. Filling trucks.
Sort of like invitation. I'm just curious.
I, I'd say they'll be out there. Yeah, I, they, they have to be done before, you know, they're going to have to start using kelp and chloride, because it's going to get cold, so they, he said this stuff, you saw them pouring today?
Yeah, you can ride by the, uh, the park, you'll see the, the ramp, already poured, first pour.
Yeah, so it's going to be.
You'll see, you'll see surface pour on it.
Oh, that, uh.
I'd say spring, but if we have good weather, that's on the south side anyway.
And my initials might be in it.
I won't be on the skating, but I mean, I'm all done with that.
Oh, now you got it.
Yeah, I'm all done, I can't fall away, I used to.
I do a field, they took down that fence.
You like it, huh?
It makes it look bigger.
Yes, yes.
It's crazy.
It was a long debate, it was kind of like the word child, it was a long debate.
Which fence?
All taking the fence down, it's like, it's like path and, uh, baseball.
And it makes it look so much bigger, it's almost, yeah, it's almost like, yeah, it's almost like, what the heck happened?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Sometimes, different ideas, but you sit down and work it all out.
Me like after Starberg.
That was pretty cool.
Not going to have the corral. You have to find that hole in the fence and get on.
Yeah, that's.
It's how I get into all the games. All right, anything else on the, do you have a, um, the enrollment report or is? All right.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.